Good evening. It is six o'clock. I'm going to call to order the city council meeting for June 28, 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Estes?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Corey?
Here.
Councilmember Rick?
Here.
Councilmember Applegate?
Here.
Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
I have six members in person, and Councilmember Applegate is joining us virtually. I have seven members present.
All right. I'm glad Councilmember Applegate's able to join us virtually. Thank you very much. We're going to go on to skipping item 4.1. I was just told that the presentation will not be done tonight, so we're going to skip that item. Item 4.2, Board and Commissions Appointing. We have an appointment of one regular member to the park board. And it says, Ms. Huffman, is someone going to take that item over for her?
Yes, I can do that. Sorry, I saw Mr. Johnson get up and I thought he was doing it all of a sudden. I was like, wait a minute. Sorry about that. We have currently one, we received one applicant for the vacancy at the park board, and Ms. Brittany Diaz submitted her application for the vacancy for a position for a four-year term. The term will expire in June of 2026, and I'm sorry, I don't know if she's present tonight. She is, there she is.
I thought that was you. Yeah, come on up. Yes, thank you. If you could just state your name for the record, please? Oh, hang on, just a second. Somebody needs to turn the mic on for you. There you go.
My name's Brittany Diaz.
Hi, Brittany. Thank you so much for signing up to be on the park board.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. What interests you about being on the park board?
I have four little ones, and I live in the Cumberland Green Development. I hear a lot of concerns and positivity coming from my neighbors and everyone along those lines, so I am pretty excited to do this.
Okay, great, fantastic. Appreciate you being here tonight and introducing yourself.
Thank you, ma'am.
Makes it easier for us to put a name and a face together.
Appreciate it.
And you know what you're going to be doing for the next four years.
Yes.
You're going to be on the park board. All right, council, what would you like to do? Can I get to the right screen there? Councilmember Duncan?
I move to appoint Ms. Brittany Diaz to the Park and Recreation Advisory Board for a four-year term.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Corey?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? If not, please vote.
Mayor Thompson, I don't believe the voting is going to be as attached to this item, so I'm going to do a verbal vote. So Mayor Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Estes, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Hinton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Corey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Rick, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carried.
Great, thank you very much. I'm going to pause just one second. Thank you. Okay, we're still trying to figure out this new system we have going here, so I thought she was seeing something I couldn't see, so. Okay, thank you. All righty, moving on to item five, City Council Agenda Request. City Council may use this time to request any items for future consideration. Start on my left here, Councilmember Rick.
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Corey?
Nothing tonight, Mayor Thompson.
Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing tonight, Mayor Thompson.
Councilmember Estes?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Duncan?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Applegate?
No, I don't have anything tonight.
Great, thank you. Let me keep the flow up here. All righty, the next item is item six, Public to Be Heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. We do have a timer that will go on if someone gets up to speak. Madam Clerk, do you have any cards tonight?
I did not receive any, no, thank you.
Okay, IT, do we have anyone online that has a question tonight?
No, we don't, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, hold on.
Oh, okay.
One second. Okay, Jen, if you'd like to say something, you are unmuted. You must unmute yourself on your system, please. Okay, I'm going to take that. They put their hand down, so I'm going to take it as they're not, they have nothing to say.
Okay, all right, we can always come back to that if the technology catches up with us. Okay, all righty. Councilmember Rick, you said you might have someone who had sent you a question but might not be able to have connection tonight.
Yes, yes, Madam Mayor. Mr. Al Lender has a question. He texted me and said he couldn't get online, but he asked me to ask it. He says he submitted a ballot question several weeks ago. Why haven't I heard whether it's approved now? The city is talking about theirs, which is on the agenda tonight. What about me and mine, a citizen and taxpayers of Fountain, Colorado? So I would ask staff if you could respond.
I can handle that question. And he did submit language for petition, and staff reviewed it, and I think probably just coordination on getting back to him, that we don't have much say over approving petition language, but everything was in order. But it was communicated to us that he wasn't planning on doing that until next year, so.
Okay, so.
And the ones that we have on tonight, I think that's what he was referencing, would be the ballot measures that the council proposed, that the council would put on, as opposed to a petition. So they're slightly different, and so I'll make sure that somebody follows up with him. I think Sylvia was going to do that, but she's had some unexpected shoulder problems, so I'll make sure somebody follows up with him and tells him that that language has been approved.
Okay, and if you could also tell him what the next steps he needs to take are, I would appreciate it.
Sure, and he's pretty well, he's pretty well-prepared. I think he had some help doing that, so he's pretty, he's on the right track as far as, as far as we're concerned on how to get a petition approved. So, yeah, he's pretty, he's on the right track. So I'll make sure to communicate with him. I'll do that myself.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That's all I had.
Thank you, and I think we got the person online connected, and if she could state her name for the record, please?
Okay, Jen, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I was just, I'm curious. I know we have an ordinance about weeds and all that, but I'm curious of who's responsible for the weeds on CNS and like where Sound Mesa is going down CNS to like Scroll Creek. Those weeds are as tall as the fence, and I know city has always been in charge of that, but it's getting worse and worse, especially now with the rain.
I'm going to have Mr. Evans, the department head, handle that question. And Jen, what was your last name? We might have lost her. Okay, go ahead, Todd.
Hi, Jen. My name is Todd Evans, and I'm the deputy city manager, and I did speak with our parks supervisor today. This is actually an area that I spoke about with Councilman Rick yesterday. So we addressed it with parks. They're down about probably sixty, seventy percent of their employees right now that typically go out and do those things. So they do have it on a schedule to take care of that next week, and as you said, they have gotten pretty large, so it is going to be pretty tough and time-consuming out there. But I did speak to them today, so your call has got good timing, and Parks will be out next week taking care of those weeds for you.
Yeah, also, I just want to remind people, we have the Fountain app. If you've got on your cell phone, you can, if you're driving past a place you have a question about, you can just snap a photo of it. Pull over, please. Not while you're driving, right? Pull over, snap a photo, go to that app, report it in, and it'll GPS it right to that spot, and it goes right to the department that would need to know about it, so. But that is generally, and that would go to code enforcement or Parks, either one. It just, yeah, it gets parceled out. So code enforcement, give it to them, let them handle. Okay, all right, they'll figure it out. All right, do we have anybody else online? Okay, anybody from the audience with any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, item 7A. All items listed in the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of any items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately at the discretion of council. What would council like to do? Councilmember Corey?
Move to approve the meeting minutes from the June 14, 2022 Fountain City Council meeting.
Councilmember Hinton?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing no, none, please vote.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
I think I'm going to restart the vote because it shows that only two of them have been recorded.
Yeah.
So let me try that again. I'm not sure what happened there, so let's start over.
Yeah, mine did too.
All right.
Okay, there we go. Try again.
There, it stayed in the right place this time.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, there we go. Okay, moving on to item eight, Old Business A. Second reading of ordinance number 1778. An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Fountain from the Regional Commercial RC District to the multifamily MF District for property sometimes known as Garrison by watermark, generally located at the southeast corner of Mesa Ridge Parkway and Metropolitan Road, and hereinafter more specifically described in Exhibits A and B. Ms. Martinez?
Good evening, Kristi Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. As that was read into the record, this is a second reading of ordinance 1778, which is a proposed rezoning of approximately 21.8 acres from Regional Commercial to multifamily. The applicant is proposing to build a multifamily apartment complex on the south side of Mesa Ridge. Are there any questions? And there's been no changes to the ordinance since first reading.
Okay, are there any questions from any council members? Councilmember Rick?
No, sorry, ma'am.
Okay. All right, is there any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do? Councilmember Rick?
I believe Mayor Protem was first.
Thank you. Councilmember, or Councilmember Estes?
I move to approve ordinance number 1778 on second reading.
Councilmember Rick?
Second the motion.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion from any council members? Seeing none? Please vote.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
Okay, we're going to move on then to item nine, New Business. We're going to skip item 9A, since there was nothing removed from the consent agenda. That takes us on to item 9B. I am opening a public hearing and resolution 20-035, a resolution approving a conditional use to allow a childcare facility to be operated by the Young Men Christians Association, YMCA, of the Pike's Peach Region located at 326 West Alabama Avenue, Fountain, Colorado, in the single-family small lot residential R1 Zone District, here and after described in Exhibit A. Ms. Martinez?
Good evening, Kristi Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. Again, the item before you is a conditional use request to allow a childcare facility within the School District Eight, Fountain Ford Carson School District Eight's former DFAC building, which is the Dean Fleischhauer Activity Center. Next slide. The property is located on the south side of Alabama and west of Highway 85 or Santa Fe, and is owned the single-family residential small lot R1 Zone District. Next slide. Within the Title 17 of the Fountain Municipal Code, childcare facilities are a conditional use within the R1 Zone District. A conditional use basically says that it's allowed to use, but does require an additional review by Planning Commission and City Council for the potential of impacts to the adjoining property owners in the neighborhood. As I mentioned, the YMCA will be locating in the existing DFAC building by School District Eight. They are contracting with the YMCA to utilize that facility as an activity center and providing childcare through the YMCA, both before and after school care and activities within the building. The YMCA proposes to use three existing classrooms within the facility. In 2021, School District Eight has upgraded the building to bring it into ADA compliance with current regulations in addition to other upgrades to the exterior and interior of the structure. Next slide. For the surrounding land uses and zoning, there is the Fountain Middle School to the north with residential development to the southeast and to the west, with various zonings that are all fairly compatible with the RMU Zone District and the CMU Zone District. There will be no utility, new utility services to the building. All existing services exist and are not planning to be changed or modified with this modification to the structure. In addition to no modification, access points onto West Alabama will remain in their existing access points. They have two access points for entrance and then an exit along the south side of Alabama. As this is a public hearing, the public notice was provided informing the public of this meeting a minimum of fifteen days prior to the hearing. It was posted in the local newspaper, mailed to all the property owners within 400 feet, and the property was posted. No feedback was received based on that solicitation. Next slide. This is the site development plan that was submitted for the DFAC building, so not much has really changed since the construction. You can see the two access points on the upper image. To the left, you see the two access points onto Alabama with the building in the center. They do have parking on three sides to provide adequate parking facilities for anybody who may utilize that facility. And then thank you to Google Earth Street Images. You can see the image on the bottom, which shows the existing facility with the entrance on their most eastern access. And again, the access points loop around the building. Next slide. The future land use plan within the comprehensive development plan does make a recommendation of public uses. As this facility is still owned by the Fountain Ford Carson School District Eight, it is consistent with the future land use plan of the comprehensive development plan. Next slide. Staff finds that the conditional use request is consistent with the review criteria in Section 1726030 of the Fountain Municipal Code. This item was presented before the City Planning Commission at their June meeting, at which time they did make a favorable recommendation. Therefore, tonight's staff would not oppose the approval of Resolution 22-035, which would approve a conditional use to allow a childcare facility at this location. Are there any questions for staff?
Okay, any, is there anything in the public?
Oh, we do have the applicant here, Brian Rizley, who is representing the YMCA, and he is with CRP Architects, if there are any questions for him as well.
So one, Mr. Carrick? Please come forward and use the microphone and state your name.
Floyd Carrick, Fountain, Colorado. I'd like to ask what the occupancy amount is allowed in accordance with the safety program with the fire department and the police department.
All right, thank you. We'll come back to that question. We'll hang on to for just a second. Did the applicant want to come up and say something?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of city council. My name is Brian Rizley. As Ms. Martinez indicated, I'm with CRP Architects, and I'm here to represent both YMCA and the Fountain School District in this matter. I can certainly go through some of the approval criteria if it's helpful, but in the interest of time, unless there are specific questions, I won't bore you with that. We did go through it in fairly adequate detail with the Planning Commission. Bottom line is, this facility will serve a great need in the Fountain community. As you are all aware, there's a significant lack of childcare services, certainly in the older downtown part of Fountain, and we know that this will meet that need without any question in a very cost-effective way through the partnership between the YMCA and the school district. I do have someone here with me from the YMCA if there are questions about the specific programs, but other than that, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions that you might have, unless, Madam Mayor, you would prefer that I go through the review criteria.
Well, we did have a question, a pretty specific question from the public. So he asked the question, what was going to be the occupancy of the childcare center?
Yes, ma'am.
And what can, what plans have you made with the police and fire department for response times and issues? I believe that was his question. So if we could go through at least that criteria, please?
Absolutely. Excellent question. So the existing building is about 20,000 square feet. The area of the, in question of the three classrooms that are being proposed to be used as childcare classrooms are about 2,600 square feet, so it's roughly 10% or less of the total facility. We did meet with the fire department on numerous occasions and actually made improvements to the building in, through November, and November through March of this past winter to correct some deficiencies as it relates to exiting from those classrooms. We met with Mr. Evans and Chief Maxson at the time, and Michael Gates, and talked about the exiting requirements, the safety requirements for those spaces. We submitted a modification to the building through the building department, which, as I said, has now been completed, and so those rooms are fully accessible. They are fully compliant with current building code requirements, and they are absolutely safe for occupancy for this purpose.
Okay, I appreciate that, because that's actually one of the questions that I had on my list of things to ask, because I know sometimes school districts have different requirements than we require for commercial buildings, and I wanted to make sure that those were up to current commercial standards, because it's not really fair if we allow a commercial business to come in and not have to reach up to those standards, especially where children are going to be attending. Mr. Carrick, does that answer your question?
Yeah.
And so in that 2,600 feet, how many, how many students do you anticipate being able to participate in those programs?
I would defer to Melanie with the YMCA. She would have a better handle on how many students they intend to serve.
Okay. Yes, come on up, please. That's fine. Thank you.
My name's Melanie Zuniga, and I think our, we're hoping to apply for a license to serve up to 75 children. It'll be dependent, though, on registration and what kind of programming we're going to offer, as to how many will attend.
Okay, Councilmember Duncan?
My question was about programming, because these, these are after-school activities, right? After-school program?
Yes, ma'am, and then during the summer, it'll be all day, potentially.
So, you know, my question was based on what activities that you would have for outdoors.
That is a great question with the space there, right? Like, we have some ideas around like gaga pits and basketball court and some different things like that, but that will be part of our before and after-school program. So we don't currently have any, like, specifically outdoor programs determined yet, but just outdoor play within our programs that we do offer, or potentially offer.
And what would be the hours? And what would be the hours?
Uh, so for after-school, it'll be once school lets out until six o'clock PM.
Okay.
And then during the summer, when we're running day camp, we're hoping to run six-thirty AM to six o'clock PM.
Okay.
And then we also have plans to do a before-school, middle-school program, so that would run from six-thirty in the morning until school starts and they walk over.
And will this, I know that Y also has a before program, so will this take place of that?
The before program for elementary kids or middle school?
I don't know which one. I know they have kids there before.
In the morning. Yeah, so middle school will be before school, and we're currently not running before school for elementary school, not, no plans because of the busing and getting them to their schools in time for school to start. So it'll just be after school, and the School District will bus them to the Y, and then parents will pick up from the Y.
Okay, thank you.
So does this take the place of any programs that are run at each individual school after school? The kids get bused to there now, or are there still going to be programs at the school?
We haven't run any programs at every school for a long time. We were based out of Aragon before COVID, and the other schools would bus over to Aragon. So, yeah, we'll just pick that up and move it to the Y versus being at Aragon.
Okay, because when I was at school your wife teaches.
Sure.
No, the other one. I thought she was at Eagle Side. Okay, Eagle Side. Sorry, I know where you were. Eagle Side, we couldn't get into the building one evening till like six fifteen because there was an after-school program there till six, so I guess I was just a little confused.
Yeah, and that might have been ran by another organization, yeah.
Okay, so if they're in D eight, they have transportation to the programs at the YMCA? But if they're not in D eight, how did they find out about the program? And I assume there's scholarships available?
Absolutely. We do financial assistance. We also, once we're licensed, we'll be able to utilize the CCAP program, the Colorado Childcare Assistance Program. And then as far as marketing, we market through the Y, through email, to current members, past participants, all of that. So D eight will help us promote to their students, and then everyone else will do kind of the way we do in the Y with email, marketing, flyers, et cetera.
Okay, all righty. Got a little off-topic with this. We're here about that. Everybody's very interested in it because we do know that childcare is a need in our community, and so hopefully we'll be filling that niche with there.
Absolutely.
One of the things I had talked to you about earlier on the School District before the Y had even opened there was the possibility of using those rooms for two dual purposes during the day when you weren't using them for childcare, potentially opening it up to the community to use as a community room because we do have a shortage of those in this area. I'm hoping that's something that you will still keep on your plate. I'm someone who used to teach in a school where we had to share it with daycare and a church, so it is possible to use rooms really fully, but you really need to plan it into what you're doing now in terms of that. So I hope something that you'll consider, opening it up to different community groups, such as the senior center and just different groups wanting to do something before the kids are there, and then maybe in the evenings, because like I said, we do need that community space. And their answer back to me at that time was the rooms are not ADA and, you know, fire-ready. So now that you've gone down that track, and they're going to be, hopefully, we can use them a little bit more, and hopefully you guys will consider that.
Yeah, that's a great idea. I think I'll, I can definitely mention it to Annika, who's the Director of Ops over here in Fountain, as well as my supervisor, Jamie Holstein, and we can definitely get that rolling for sure.
That would be great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
And if I could just chime in quickly on that point, there have been several conversations already between community groups in Fountain and the YMCA. I know they were exploring some opportunities when the Y first moved into that building, and so I think you're spot-on that those are needs absolutely in the community and can be filled by this facility.
Great, thank you. I appreciate. No, and those are still going on. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any more questions from anyone in the public that has any further questions?
Madam Mayor, point of order?
Yes.
I apologize, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, members of the public, I feel I must disclose that back in April, Mr. Evans and Mrs. Carrick and I took a tour of the community. At that time, Mr. Evans did disclose to me that this application was going on, and I did tour the area. I'm disclosing that as a member of, as a matter of public interest. I did know about this before this hearing. I don't feel I need to recuse myself, but I have to ask the City Attorney whether I should or not.
Yeah, I think that's appreciated, Mr. Rick. Did you have conversations with anybody about this particular item, like at the YMCA or anything?
Other than Mr. Evans and Mrs. Carrick, who were there, and Mr. Evans was explaining what was going to happen, no.
Okay. As long, I mean, is there any other information that you gathered from that that you want to share?
Just that there was the possibility that in the future, daycare may be offered there. He showed us the rooms and the facilities, but that was it.
Okay, I think, thank you, Mr. Rick. Appreciate it.
Mr. Rick, can I confirm that was a good tour, right?
That was a good.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Just want to confirm the quality.
Well, I think, yeah, I think everybody just heard I toured the building too. You know, I toured the building, but I had never been in it. I'd never been in the entire building, so that's why I asked D eight to take me around through the whole building to get the lay of the land like two, three years ago, way before YMCA was even in the scene.
Like I said, Mr. Evans did disclose that they were looking at that for daycare at the time, and pursuant to public interest in the open meeting law, I felt I needed to disclose that. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Estes needs to disclose she went to school there?
Yes, I did. I did graduate when that was the high school, and I attended band classes in that building, so I know the layout.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Rick. I especially, you know, appreciate you being really careful about that. So, yeah. All righty, we've all toured it. See the great asset we have over there, hopefully.
And Madam Mayor, while we're having a little bit of fun with that, I'm sure the YMCA would be more than happy to sell memberships to any or all of you if you're interested in joining the Y.
Oh, my goodness. Yes, all righty. Okay, all right, back to where we were. Are there any more people from the public that have any questions or comments about this project? All right, seeing none, are there any further questions from any council members?
I don't have a question. I did not go to school there, and I do have a membership, so.
Excellent.
I just wanted, you know, to say that I have used that facility for Black History programs, and those rooms are available for use. So just want to let you know that when I toured the facility to see where I can do certain things, they have aerobics, different classes in there during the day, so they are being used for the public.
Right, that's great to hear. That's happening already. I think I was specifically asking about the classrooms around the back that face.
Those three particular that are being.
Yeah, that side, and they weren't available at that time, yeah. Yeah, due to some upgrades that you guys have hopefully are going to, are doing or going to do.
Completed.
Completed. All right, perfect. Okay, so I don't see any more public, I don't see any more questions from any council members. So I am going to close the public hearing and bring it back up here to council. And council members, do you have any discussion on this item? Okay, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close it for a discussion, and then we're going to, what would council like to do with this item? Councilmember, were you trying to ring in, or did you have a discuss? The problem, I don't see anything up here when they have slides up there, so I'm kind of flying blind at that point, yeah.
No, I was just saying, like you said, that it's a well-needed program here in the community, and I'm glad to see it to come forth, but I would like to make a motion.
Okay, Councilmember Duncan?
Let me find the paper.
Sure.
I guess I just move to approve?
Yes. Resolution twenty-two dash zero three five.
Okay. I move to approve resolution twenty-two dash zero three five.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second, Councilmember Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, and second on twenty-two zero three five. Any further discussion? Councilmember Duncan, do you have further discussion?
Oh.
Okay. All right, seeing none? Please vote.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Seven yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we're on to item nine C, presentation of public safety and street funding survey reports. Results, where did? Okay, Mr. Trainer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. As you may recall, a couple of months ago, the council authorized us to move forward with a couple of surveys pertaining to potential ballot measures. The idea behind the surveys was to ask our community how they felt about the potential for a ballot measure this November on the Pike's Peak Regional Transportation Authority as well as public safety. And so both of those surveys have been completed now by Magellan Strategies. David Flaherty is here with Magellan Strategies, and he has a presentation for the City Council, and he will talk through the results of those surveys. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Flaherty.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to have our firm accurately measure voter opinion on these two important ballot measures. We're going to begin first with the public safety one, and then we're going to do the transportation PPRTA one. So let's just get started. Next slide, please. Okay, the survey methodology. Again, I want to get too down in the details, but data collection's important. We interviewed eight-hundred-and-fifty-three registered voters in the City of Fountain, Colorado that are likely to vote in the November twenty-twenty-two election. Just to put that in perspective, on average, in a midterm election, the City of Fountain will see turnout around eight thousand voters. It may be a little bit higher come November twenty-two. But the way we interviewed voters and made them aware of the survey were multiple data collection methods. Some folks we called up and interviewed over the telephone. Some were interviewed by us sending an MMS text, as you can see with the city logo, inviting and educating people to participate in the survey, to make their voice heard. And then also, the city itself and staff publicized and pushed out the survey to make people aware. It's a good ingredient of a well-conducted survey, of giving people many opportunities to participate in that survey. And the results have a margin of error of plus or minus three-point-two-six percent. So if we measure something at fifty percent, let's say, when we have a sample size of over eight hundred voters, it's basically either going to be three points above that, or below that, or within the range, just so you can understand that on the top-line documents. Next slide, please. The objectives of this survey were to measure support and opposition levels for a six-point-two-mill levy property tax increase to create a dedicated one-point-seven-million-dollar funding source to fund a variety of public safety needs. The survey also included questions about why the city is considering this ballot measure. We practice a survey approach where we measure just general opinions first before educating them on the details, and then we basically tell the city's story. Why are you considering this? It's very important. We're trying to forecast and mimic what an election environment would be like, where either in the Blue Book language, this is what they would learn, why this is being considered. And then also, we compared with two potential competing ballot measures at the very end of this survey, if there was a one percent sales tax increase to fund street funding against this one, how would you vote on those two? So next slide, please. Okay, again, I don't mean to make your head spin with this voter demographic report, but I just wanted to demonstrate, and so you can understand the method behind how we are weighting the results by voter demographic. And what I mean by that is, typically, we go back and look at the prior midterm election, which was November twenty-eighteen, and in that election, Republican voters made up thirty-seven percent of turnout, or meaning out of all votes cast, thirty-seven percent was Republican. Twenty-six percent was Democrat. Thirty-four percent was unaffiliated. Rarely, if you go back and look at this data over time, will those demographics change radically. They may change a little bit, but you're not going to see something significantly change unless you have a Barack Obama two-thousand-and-eight-style election where it is historic, and you have younger voters participating in historic levels. We also do the same by age, so just so you understand, that is our guide on how we are weighting these results because, again, rarely do they change. There is a method to this. We're not just guessing, you know, oh, people are going to vote, and we'll just kind of go willy-nilly. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Next slide, please. Also, this is for folks that are looking at this presentation. If they do not know where the city wards are, this map is just for public information purposes only, and we have results by ward. Next slide. Okay, let's get right to it. First and foremost, you want to measure job approval. In all ballot measures, if your voters do not have confidence or do not approve of the department or entity that is asking for that revenue, they are unlikely to vote for it. So one of our nice first things we like to do is measure that. Next slide, please. Do you approve or disapprove of the job the Fountain Police Department is doing? Seventy-seven percent approve, sixteen percent disapprove, seven percent no opinion. And then, as you're going to see in all of these slides, we break it out by voter subgroup. This is important to know and understand. That seventy-seven percent is very strong. It is a very strong measurement without question. We have multiple public safety ballot measure surveys going on now. We did several last year. So again, as you can see, across every demographic, we're well above a preferred sixty percent or higher number. Next slide, please. At the same time, if the voters do not believe that that department or the city does not spend taxpayer money wisely, they will not approve it, or they will be reluctant to support a tax increase. This is another measurement that we like to say, what does the public think on this department spending taxpayer money wisely? Now, preferably, we would like to be at sixty percent. It's a little bit below there, but it is above fifty. I'm not trying to point fingers. We are just measuring opinion as impressions are there. So right now, it is north of fifty-five percent, and as you can see by voter demographics, a little bit low among unaffiliated voters, but also strong enough levels among seniors and so forth. So again, this is pretty good, but it's also a very understandable. Twenty-seven percent do not have opinion, and that's very normal, okay? People do not follow local business so much where they have an impression. But again, regardless of how they think, this is important, so this measurement is pretty good. Next slide, please. Okay, the Fire Department. The Fire Department in EMS has an approval rating that is about as high as you can get. Prior to going into the field, when I was having discussions with staff, they did indicate that they felt their Fire Department and their firefighters had very strong following and so forth. I think this survey clearly validates that. Nine out of ten respondents approve of their job they're doing, extremely strong, and seventy-four percent saying they strongly approve. So clearly, not to compare police versus fire, but just to look at those two, your Fire Department is outstanding. Next slide. And then again, do they spend money responsibly and spend taxpayer money wisely? Sixty-nine percent, fourteen points higher than the police. Obviously, some of that, I think, is being brought along by their imagerating as well. But again, they're in clear shape there. So after going through those evaluations, you're in good places there. There's nothing standing out where it's like, whoa, let's hold off. And many times, we may do that, where there is a department where it's like, you know what, this may not be a good time to go. Maybe we need a little bit more time educating and informing the public perhaps of the accomplishments of the city or the department, or in some instances, a school district. So next slide. Okay, perceptions of crime and fire risk. You're asking money to address an increase in fire risk or an increase in crime. If voters don't believe that, again, they're going to be reluctant to support that. Next slide. Do you think crime in the City of Fountain has increased, declined, or stayed the same in the past couple of years? Seventy-one percent believe it has increased, sixty-five or higher across every single voter subgroup. Definitely increasing, yes, it definitely has increased, forty-one percent, probably increased thirty percent. The reason we ask this question is, is that, you know, there's times where, you know, to be very honest with you, voters are going to be reluctant to vote for something unless they think there is a need. Voters are there. They believe there has been an increase in crime. They're not blaming anybody, but therefore, just so you know, voters are where they need to be perhaps to even bring up or discuss a tax proposal to fund, to address this increase in crime. Next slide. The increase in fire risk, that is also at a strong level. Do you think the fire risk in the City of Fountain has increased? Sixty-four percent say, yes, it has, total increase. Thirty-two percent, it definitely has increased. So again, the need and the two sides of the coin here on your public safety are being met without question. Next slide. General property tax increase for Fountain's police, fire, and so forth. So next slide, please. Okay, why did we ask this question without telling them what the amount is? It's also another nice measurement to hold up against the specifics. Would you raise taxes? And in this case, we know it's going to be a property tax, not a sales tax. Would you raise your property taxes to fund police, fire, and EMS services, personnel, and programs? Just straight up. I just want to know where you are. Fifty-six percent's pretty good. It could be better. It's better than being around forty-eight, but the bottom line is, in general, it's like, all right, before you give me the bad news, you know, you have a majority of likely voters that are there. Next slide. Now we get into the details, and I want you to know that we did include language. Before we continue, it's important to understand that the city has not decided to put a ballot measure before voters this November to fund public safety services and programs. We want to be very clear to your voters and your residents that, look, your input matters here, okay? And the questions we're about to ask, it's, you're going to really decide where we're going to go with this. You're going to have a lot of input. This helps just staff in the city and the community to understand this is truly, we're listening and learning from you, okay? listening and learning from you, okay? So that was in the language that either people were read in the text survey or were read over the phone. Then we get right into the details. This November, the city is considering a public safety ballot measure to create an annual dedicated 1.7 million funding source. A ballot measure would ask voters to approve a 6.2 property tax increase. A 6.2 increase would cost a homeowner about $178 annually, or $15 a month, for a home with an assessed value of $410,000. Many times, school districts and cities and local government will put the mil levy increase ballot language out there without giving voters the ability to wrap their head around how much it's going to cost them. Sometimes we hop out of our lane. I am not attorney, so no offense, sir. But again, it's, this is very helpful to the public and to voters to really understand. Roughly that 410 is the median home value in Fountain, so that's why we put it in there, so they can understand what this will cost them. And we're being transparent and upfront. We're not playing any games. Like, this is what we're looking to need, and this is how much money it's going to raise. Now let's talk about how much it's going to, how we're going to spend it. But, so this is what we call the uninformed ballot test. We haven't gotten in details other than it's going to go to service. So, next slide, please. Okay, support levels on the uninformed, and I mean uninformed because we haven't gotten in about how this money's going to be spent. You're starting out at 57%, which is pretty good. Intensity, definitely yes, approve at 30%, definitely no, reject at 22. You have a 9% undecided and a 34% know that we're going to reject. As you can see, though, by all the voter subgroups, and especially those seniors, because if you can understand, folks that are older are more likely to own a home, therefore, they're the ones that are going to be taxed, rather than younger voters that will not. They're not going to be carrying the burden. But overall, you're starting out at a pretty good place. And I believe you're there right now, simply because they do believe crime has gone up, they do believe fire risk has gone up, they do believe that this is a problem that needs to be addressed, and now they're sort of willing to listen. But reluctantly, right now, you're at 57%. Next slide. And again, this is the exact same slide, but I always think it's very important for you to understand how do lower-income residents, or how are they digesting this question? And as you can see, among folks that have a household income of $50,000 or less, you still have a majority up there at 59%. So I just want to always put that in there. Next slide. Okay, now we're going to talk about and share information about why this is being considered and how the money is going to be spent. This is information that we would anticipate that a half-decent, well-funded, half-executed campaign would get out there. If you're going to be out there and you decide to put this on the ballot, this is what I would assume public safety advocates would be talking about. So we spoon-feed into the respondents perhaps information that they may need. And it's also more relevant, rather than just saying, okay, we're all done, you're at 57%. That's really nuts what's going to happen in the fall. So we have a lot going on here, so let's get into what information gave voters indication. Because after we said, after reading this, are you more likely to support it, or are you more likely to oppose it? So, next slide, please. And these questions are ranked by the percentage that are more likely to support. If approved, the ballot measure would fund a third full-time ambulance unit and additional firefighter capabilities. Eight out of 10 respondents said that would make me more likely to approve this. The city plans to build a new fire station with a police substation on the east side of Fountain. As you notice, there's a lot of detail here, and a lot of times, people are like, you're really going to put all that in the survey? Voters don't care about that. Yes, they do. The more detailed, the better, okay? Do not ever be vague. They really want to know. They want to know where every penny is going, and they want to know exactly how this is going to be spent. The more that they get the picture, the more you can have an honest discussion in your community about where this is going to go, whether to support this or oppose it, and the costs. Other things, you know, if the ballot measure is approved, six police officers would be hired to support increased traffic enforcement, reduced response times, et cetera, et cetera. In addition, dedicated addressing crimes against children, sex trafficking, and financial crimes. Next slide. And there were 10 of these, by the way, that we did test. This one right here that I thought was interesting, I didn't really know if this was going to matter or not. The new fire station is estimated to decrease Fountain homeowners' insurance by $400 to $600 annually. That's a new twist. I've never seen something like that. Honestly, in my 15 years of doing these ballot measures, I didn't know where this was going to land. It was actually on the higher end of things, so that actually is important. So, I won't go through all of these right now, everyone, but I just want you to know, you can look at this research and understand where they were. But as you can see, many of these voters were there. Many of the voters are supportive. Next slide. And again, next slide. And I won't take up too much time here. I want to, and one more slide as we go. So after they were read, those 10, and they have the full picture of how this money is going to be sent, we then said, okay, thank you for learning why the city is considering this ballot measure. As a reminder, and again, we're basically going to remind them, it's 1.7 million dedicated funding source, 6.2 mil, it's going to cost you $178 annually and a home value of 410. Knowing this information, and we're asking them again, would you vote yes or no? And the next slide, please. And you can see that the support levels are now at 70%. On this ballot measurement, we have an option in there, do you, you know, among the folks, you know, do you lean towards voting yes and want to approve? Definitely approve is at 39%. That's a strong support level to begin this with. Probably approve at 21%. Lean towards yes, 10. The noes have actually gone down about to 16%. Probably no, reject, 6, and so forth. So as you can see, support levels are pretty strong here across the board, if everything that is going to be brought to fruition from the message testing. The next slide. Again, I also like to see how the younger, excuse me, economically break out. As you can see, 75% of folks making $50,000 or less. Definitely vote yes, again, 39. Very strong support levels on the informed ballot, as we call it, okay? And remember, this is not exactly what we are forecasting will happen if they know everything, because campaigns have limited dollars, you understand those things, but this is what potentially support levels could reach. Next slide. Open-ended, and I strongly recommend that you read the open-ended verbatims. Why are you voting for this? The themes, these services are important for public safety. Our community is growing. I'm not going to read off of here just a selection of some of the verbatim responses. You know, with the population growth steadily increasing, we have an increased need for more police, fire, and EMS. Due to an increase in crime and decreased response times, officer wellness. The city's growing and society's getting more desperate. These times call for law and fire measures to be growing with the times. Please look at all those verbatims, and please read every single one. It's kind of your homework. If you really want to understand your community and the investment in this research, there's really no better way. It's, I'm reporting the data back to you, just to either validate perhaps what some of your assumptions were before you did this, but it really is a fantastic way to really understand the sense of the community and how they view this. Next slide, on the noes. Okay, 26% on the noes. Why would they vote to reject it? Taxes and the cost of living already too high. Understand something, in nearly every community I work in, in every economic environment for the last 15 years, you're always going to have typically 20% to 25% of folks that simply, either they are seniors and they're living on fixed incomes, and as much as they may be supportive of this, they feel they cannot afford it. Obviously, in this times of rising inflation and so forth, this is a very new, strong headwind we haven't seen in, you know, I'm 53, in my lifetime, since I've been surveying for 30 years. So that's very understandable. Some people will say, I do not trust how the money should be spent, or that, don't we have money coming in already, and the city should be spending, you know, managing their dollars more efficiently. That's very typical sentiment, and again, I'm just reporting on what the data is. There's some questions a little bit on how the police department has spent money in the past. I'm not saying it's overwhelming, so please keep it in perspective here. This is 26%. It's not 50%. But again, read those no verbatims. It's very helpful to understand where people are coming from in your community about why they have pause or they plan on voting no. Next slide. And then, you know, why are you undecided, that 4%? This is very typical. I need more information. Services are important, but the cost is high. I'm on the fence. I really would like this, but that's a big ask. And I'm not going to kid around. The mil levy amount is above average of what we typically would see. But again, that's how the finances work out. One more slide. This shows the shift in support of the uninformed ballotists to the informed. When people become informed, we measured a movement of 13%. We saw a decline in opposition by eight points, and undecided's going down by 5%. Next slide. And then finally, we asked, without getting into too much detail, because we only have so much time, and the survey can be only so much length before you have respondent fatigue, there's also been a consideration for a 1% sales tax to increase for street maintenance and road repairs. How would you vote if both of those were on the ballot? Next slide, please. And I know there's a lot going on here, a lot of colors. That deep blue, 35% would say they approve both. That signals to me that I would have a lot of reluctance to recommend putting both on. The 20% would approve public safety only. 12% would approve streets only. 18% would reject both. This is a very murky situation here. Now granted, those seniors at 65%, interestingly enough, is where you're finding your biggest support, but even that, that one subgroup is showing the most, and they're not hitting 50%. So we just probably, after just going through this first, remember, we did the public safety survey first before we got to transportation. So with that, I would just say, you know, be careful here. And working with other communities over the years, having two different ballot measures for two different things can be problematic, and typically, they will cancel each other out, and obviously, in these economic times. So I'm not going to make any recommendations here, but that this slide should tell you, you know, you should have a lot of reluctance by putting both on. But again, I'm happy to answer questions on that. Next. So with that, next slide, please. Final thoughts and conclusions. These slides, next slide, please. This is basically a summary of everything that I just went through. To summarize, support levels are strong. The need for these dollars is strong. The need is there. You don't need necessarily to move voters. A lot of it, at least among seven out of 10 voters, are more considering it, the costs of that. So with that, I'll stop there and answer questions about this first survey.
Okay, so you want questions only on the information that you're given on public safety or...
Do we want to do both? Yeah, we can do transportation next, Mayor, if you wish, and then discuss both?
I prefer to just see both and then discuss it. What does everybody else think?
I agree.
Okay.
Okay.
Happy to do that. Okay. Okay, street funding, and, yep, maximize that. Yeah. Okay. Sorry, I'll be, yeah, you're going to be able to maximize that. That's okay. That's fine. People could say that, okay. Yeah, no worries. Yep, there we go. Okay. Okay. This survey was done using the same methodology after the first survey. We had a little bit of a lower response rate of 520 registered voters. At the same time, that's still a very good sample size. Typically, the minimum sample size that we prefer to even make an observation on is 300 voters, so still, 520 is very good. Road funding perhaps may not be as sexy, if you will, as public safety, I'm saying, you know, here or there, but again, don't question in any way that 520 versus the 800 we did on public safety. Margin of error on these responses is 4.23% at the 95% confidence interval. Next slide. Okay, this objectives. Okay, joining the PPRTA is a complicated process. This survey had a little bit more challenging to it, and we worked very hard with staff in educating voters in residence on what this would look like. But the first and foremost, the first step is approving a 1% sales tax to join the PPRTA. Again, we also included information to the respondents about, by joining that, how will that benefit the community, how those dollars will be spent, et cetera, et cetera. And then finally, we also measured that ballot measure results against the public safety one. Next slide. Again, this is if somebody's reviewing, same demographics to understand, we use the 2018 election returns demographics to weigh this survey. We already covered that earlier. Again, next slide. And again, the city of Fountain map, in case someone doesn't know where the wards are, and they see the ward results. Next slide. Okay, condition of city streets and roads. Let's get right to it. Next slide. How would you rate the condition of the streets and roads in the city of Fountain? I'm not pointing any fingers, but in my 15 years of doing this, I've never had a rating this low. I've never had an excellent or good at 20%. I'm not pointing any fingers here, but just like on public safety, where people believe crime's on the rise and these resources are needed, exact same thing is going on here. Wow, people really do want their roads addressed. They don't, and again, the voter does not need to be convinced. They know they are. I'm not pointing any figures on resources, but I would hope this survey at least helps educate and inform people that the cost to address, you know, the roads and so forth. We didn't get into the weeds and like, these roads are managed by the county versus these roads are managed by the city, you're getting into that. Again, we're just laying out where they are. So where's the initial impressions? As you can see here, it's, people don't need to be, you know, thinking they're bad. Only fair to poor, 78%. Next slide. Okay, do you approve or disapprove of the job the Fountain Streets Department does to maintain and improve the city's streets, roads, and bridges? And understand something here, 48%, it's split down the middle. And remember how I mentioned before, if people do not think you're doing a good job, they may have reluctance or pause in supporting some. Considering what people perceive the roads to be at, that we're at a one-to-one sort of job approval rating at 48 of 48, that's still pretty good. But obviously, you know, I'll also address this, don't think that it's all their fault. There's also, like, they're doing their jobs to do the roads. Your communications department is getting the word out about a lot of things. How much you've educated and informed, you've got so much going on, not just with your COVID regulations, when you're coming out the last couple of years, but really talking about and educating, like, hey, we really have one hand tied behind our back on just the cost of address roads, et cetera. So I just want to say that here, so please don't think I'm putting this slide up where we ask this question. But obviously, the approval level is lower here. There's still a story that needs to be told. Only 11% strongly approve, 37% somewhat approve. Next slide. And then, we ask an image rating question on the Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority. Do you have a favorable or unfavorable opinion? Why did I ask this question? This is the group that we're going to be joining. I wanted to know how many people were familiar with it. Only 35% have an opinion, meaning a favorable or unfavorable opinion, okay? So only one-third of folks even have an opinion of that. Their image rating isn't great, it's one-to-one, but the vast majority of people have heard of them and don't have an opinion, and four out of 10 have never heard of them. So again, part of this discussion, what does this organization do? What do they do for its membership? And this survey, we hope, answers some of those questions and paints the picture of what this is all about. Next slide, please. Okay, again, we talked about the city of Fountain is considering joining the Pike's Peak Rural Transportation Authority. As a member, funding for the city's streets and maintenance capital projects would increase significantly. To join the PPRTA, Fountain voters must approve a 1% sales and use tax. In that first paragraph, we did want to make it clear that, why is the money going out of town? of town? And just so that, just the basic understanding, look, we're joining them because we're going to get money back, and just so that they understand that. So I just want you to understand whether it's like, does that bias this question? No, it's, it's a fundamental fact that they should understand. And it very well may or may not be in the ballot language, but I won't get into that. And then a 1% sales tax is going to raise 2.4 million. It's going to go directly to PPRTA. It's going to cost a consumer 10 cents on a $10 purchase. Food and grocery are exempt. If an election were held today, would you vote yes or approve or no and reject? Next slide. And you have support at 58%, which is interesting. Among Democratic voters, it gets nearly eight out of 10. Ward one, 68% support. The percentage that would definitely vote yes, 22, probably 36. I think just letting people know that we'll get funds back and where we are is why it's going above 50. If we had really decided to make that extremely bland, that support level may be a little bit lower. But again, there's a story to tell here, because this isn't your typical, we want to raise 1% sales tax, and we're going to dedicate it for city road funding that we're going to expend, because there's more going on here. Next slide, please. And then again, under lower income folks, less than $50,000, we're at 57%. Again, I just think the need and the want to address the roads is really coming through here before they even learn about the details. Next slide. Okay, following your questions, providing information on why the city's considering joining. After hearing and reading the information, please tell me if you would vote yes or approve or no, vote or reject it. And there were seven information questions. Next slide. Okay, this came up, you know, in the verbatims, you know, ranked by the percent why they're more likely to support. 76% said they would be more likely to support it, knowing that the city didn't join the PPRTA in the less, in the past, because its bylaws did not guarantee Fountain's sales tax revenue would not come back to the city. There is still a reluctance and a skepticism, just so you understand, even after telling folks that. And I'm sure it's longtime residents that follow city business, and they're like, no, those guys, you know, don't trust them, don't trust them. And that's definitely part of the open end of verbatims. But the bottom line is, knowing that, I think that opened up a lot of eyes, it's like, oh, if, if that's guaranteed, we're getting our money back at a minimum, I would support it. Then we get into the costs and what areas of Fountain would benefit. Road surfacing and rebuilding that need attention, major roadways, including, you know, naming streets. You know, this passes the what's in it for me test, you know, it's a lot of times, like, are you going to raise taxes? Is it going to impact my community and where I live? So that's just some of the areas that we're mentioning there, 71%. Next slide. This is another unique twist to this ballot measure of informing folks that you're already paying the 1% sales tax in other areas, other member governments, and you're not getting the benefit of it. That was very interesting when Scott mentioned that to me, boy, way back in the very beginning when we had this discussion, that, although a lot of people don't know that. I think that also is a big part of building us, you're right. Like, we are already, anytime we purchase something in those areas, we're not getting that benefit back. You know, and, and some folks, it's estimated by the Finance Department that we're losing about 1.2 million. So this makes sense. Then we get into, you know, the, what the Streets Department is responsible for, kind of laying out the, the job that they have, just to let people know. But most importantly, the department has an annual budget of approximately 650, but we have a backlog. Many, many people don't understand like, the technical term for backlog, but that we're going to need 50 to 75 million to address the needs that we have. And that by joining the, you know, the PPRTA, because again, there's that get dedicated roughly 2 million every year, and then the second election for potentially 3 million for capital projects. That's a lot to swallow, but the bottom line is, is that, that's what voters need to know. Next slide. And it is, it's about educating them, like, when I first looked at the data on this, I'm like, you guys are looking at 50, 75 million, you're only putting 650 at it? And, you know, can you bond? How are you going to get there? And then we kind of break down the job, like, I'm like, tell me how you get to 50 to 75 million. I do not believe you. And when staff educated me on, on a neighborhood by neighborhood, you know, from, you know, chip seal, roads, curbs, gutters, just in each of these neighborhoods, and on average, it can range from three to eight million to address those needs, it's like, okay, we can start to get to 50 million pretty quickly if many are that bad. I had no idea, honestly, just the state of the roads in. And I think voters and residents appreciate the fact to understand, okay, we're not going to get to 50 or 75 million by going in debt or anything overnight, and if this is the cost for us to address where we need to do, again, we're trying to bring them in and inform and educate them so they know what we're talking about. Next slide. And then this is just a simple education, you know, it, here's the other member governments that are involved in it, and how it's funded, where they all also have a 1% sales tax and raise about 104 million annually. Okay, next slide. And then again, we have, we wrap it up. Thank you for getting informed. Just as a reminder, here's what, you know, a ballot measure would do in a 1% sales tax. This is what we would get in return going to PPRTA. Next slide. And so support levels go up to 71%. Yeah, it's, but again, it's, it's, it's a desperation and a need. Next slide, real quick. And again, overwhelming support by all income levels, one more slide. Tell me why I should vote yes and approve it. And my main theme, and usually I have three or four themes, here's your number one theme, it is, it is so bad, something must be done, and there's desperation. Simple as that. You know, again, please, for your homework, read these verbatims. And I like this one in the middle, I'll read this one. The City of Fountain has done a poor job of getting quality streets and sidewalks from previous developers. Consequently, what's left has deteriored to the point, if it can be repaired, you know, I'm ashamed to hear that the current budget for the upkeep of the roads is a mere 650K. Something has to change. Fountain's image structure is pathetic. Maybe PPR today could help make some desperately needed improvements. A male Republican, a senior citizen. And again, I'm not saying I like that quote, because it's being critical, perhaps, of what has happened in the past. We're looking now forward in the future. And the bottom line is, is that, really read through these seven out of 10 respondents. Everybody has a story. They do want this. They look at this as money well spent. Next slide. Okay, and again, we have our 23% why they would vote no. This isn't surprising, and again, this is our typical 20% that are reluctant on, no matter where we're going, but there's very specific, the PPRTA leadership cannot be trusted unless it is specifically states that Fountain will receive the funds. They will say one thing and then do another. I will not vote for this and will advise others to reject it as well. Male, 65 Republican. That's an impression that's out there. Taxes are already too high and we can't afford it. You know, again, and this is, you know, the, this is the voice of your residents on, on the note. Already pay too much in taxes, demanding more in taxes, while the economy is already screwed is asinine? If we already paying the taxes that the organization demands and are receiving nothing, why has the funding not been returned? Why is it continuing to be changed? And why should anyone agree to give them more in the future? So again, there's still some confusion out there. There's still, but at least now we're having a public debate. And, and the hope, and that's a nice side benefit of the, of the, of this survey, where, you know, look, we're giving you the facts as they are. This is what the deal is. Some of you may be reluctant not to believe it, but at least now we're having a discussion, and hopefully, they, they go out and get educated and informed. Next slide. Okay, movement is similar to the police ballot measure. Goes from 58 to support up to 13. Opposition drops to 23%, and undecided goes down eight. Next slide. And again, on this one, we said, as you may know, we may also ask a 6.2 mill levy increase for public safety. How would you vote? And then here we are again. Next slide, please. As you can see, approving both measures is only at 34%. Rejecting both is at 20%. Approved street funding, only 17. Approved public safety at 12. It's very murky, it's unlikely to get there if you do both. So again, next slide. And then final thoughts and conclusions, you know, again, I'm basically, next slide, please, I'm just summarizing what I just went through, what the main things were that people wanted and, and what happened. So I'll stop there and happy to take questions.
That was a lot of information. Thank you very, very much for going through both of those very quickly. What I, what I'd like to do is, we're not going to take a vote on this tonight, so, so we don't need to state our opinions, because I think we still need to spend a couple of weeks gathering a lot of information now that this information's going to be out to the public. My question to John is, how soon and where will this be available for information? Because, I mean, you just literally can't write it all down.
Yeah, of course. We're going to, we're going to put this up on our website, both of the presentations and all of the verbatims responses as well. I've already forwarded all of council, the verbatim responses and presentations, so you have those already in your inbox. And I'll get them posted, you know, by noon tomorrow on the website for the public.
Okay, and then we'll make a big deal of it on Facebook, letting everybody know the results are out there.
And then the same location on the website where I put the actual, take the survey, which was right at the very top, I'll have a new, you know, icon there that says, you know, survey results. And they'll click that link, and it'll take them to the files, the public can open that and look at all the responses.
To me, this is, that's, this is kind of like the first step in the information we need, really. What we need to hear now is from the, the people that see the results of the survey, and we need to hear back from them.
Absolutely, Mayor. You want to be 100% transparent, the, you know, each document, know exactly every question that was asked, in what order, cross tabs, verbatims, the PowerPoints, so that you can have an educated and informed discussion in the community. And, and let them see, you know, we really are not fans of sometimes it's like, oh, we're just going, no, 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 it's, this is what we did. Feel free to ask all the questions you would like, you know, and, and whether or not, which side or how you may feel about it, whether you felt it accurately measured sentiment and opinion of the community. But hopefully, people learn, and they're talking about the limited budget on roads, the need for public safety, how this money's going to be spent. And that's at least one nice side benefit where that information is out there, where perhaps, it would not be, and it would just kind of be more of a typical summer going into the fall, and be like, oh, they're putting something up there, and, you know, it, it just helps bring people in so that you can all have a, an educated and informed discussion.
Right, and I, I think we, I think we kind of accurately hit some of the two top, but two of the top hot button issues in our community. We've been listening. Now we need their input, you know, we have the results, what do you want to do? So let's, is there anybody have any questions from council about any of the amount of information that you saw tonight? Just anything off the top of your head you'd like Mr. Flaherty to clarify for us while he's here tonight? Mr. Hinton?
Not a, not a question, maybe a comment, just for those, I like the, the yes and no, but for me, the numbers were, I lie is the undecided, the people that are undecided. I think those ones are the key ones that we really need to touch and educate more on, regardless of which way they go, yes or no. Because most, nine times out of 10, most of the people that are no are going to vote, they're, they're going to, they're going to stand true to that, right? And those that are yes are going to stand true to that vote. But I do, I'm very interested in the undecided people ones, and how do we, how do we reach them? How do we, how do we educate them and to either vote their conscience?
Well, one way we can look at it, Council, you know, Councilman Hinton, is, is, we have the demographics of, you know, who's, which subgroups of voters are, have the highest level of, you know, being undecided, to see if that's a little bit above the norm. You know, whether you're looking at the uninformed or the informed ballots. Remember, we've got two ballot measurements here. Some folks just cold, here's what we're thinking, what do you think? You're going to have those undecided, but then the people that are in the loop and they get it, you have that undecided and it's going to go down. You know, the best we can do is really look at that. You know, all these responses were anonymous, obviously, but that's what I would look for, and I'd be happy to work with staff to provide that information back to you, so it'd say, look, here's the folks that were the most undecided, or perhaps had the softest support or the softest opposition. Because remember, people can still change their mind, because those undecided levels were, were relatively low, you know, especially on the informed. So you can perhaps take out the, the definite yes and the definite no's on both ballot measures, let's look at the ones that are somewhat, you know, are, you know, definitely versus somewhat likely to vote, to open up in, in the universe a little bit, and perhaps get a little bit better idea of who those folks are by party affiliation. And there's nothing wrong with that, by the way. Sometimes it'd be like, why are you asking party? It's like, because it, it helps us understand our community. There's nothing wrong with that. It's just, if you removed partisanship, you know, from the question, and you just had age and region, you know, it, it just helps. And, and you know, so, but I'm happy to do that for you if, if that is what you would like for your own better understanding of, of that.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Joni, could you take the slides down so I can see who's punching in first?
Yeah, right.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Duncan?
Okay, I would just like, when you stated about the public debate for the PPRTA, and you went through, the 71% said yes.
Yes.
And so I would like to know what percentile in the public debate that said no and what ward? So do you have that?
I do, actually. I know we took that down. It, it is in, actually in the slide. If you go, I, I will get you that slide number, because on every slide, how I have, you know, male, female, by party, and then ward one, two, and three.
Okay.
Whichever, you know, ward you're in, Councilwoman, you'll be able to look and see on the informed and the uninformed where you were on the yes and then on the no. That's, that's there, so you can, it's, it's just on the bottom, but if you need a clarified, please let me know. Happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Corey?
I had a question. You may not know this offhand, but of the percentage of people you pulled for the mill increase, how many of those were homeowners? Do you know? Do you, I mean, you may not have.
We did not ask that question. I.
Okay, because that's what I'm curious, I'd like to.
Let me see, because I'm not, because that was a mill levy, I believe we did.
Yes.
Hold on one second. Yes, 85% in the public safety were homeowners, and 9% were renters, yep.
Okay.
85%, so overwhelming majority were.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Okay, I'm not seeing any more lights from council members. Councilmember Duncan?
The, the, just to piggyback off that question, so the non-homeowners, were the information sent to the property owners?
It was sent, we engaged registered voters, Councilwoman. If you were, we did not target or add additional reaches, either sending additional texts or phone calls to a particular subgroup. It was literally off the list of registered voters, you know, of the roughly 15,000, and of those, I think we had close to 11,000 cellphone numbers that we were sending them out to. But we did not, as the results were coming in during the data collection phase, trying to, you know, look at, use that. It was more something, it will, it will land where it is, if you will. Is that?
Yeah, I asked that question because there's a lot of debate online right now about, you know, with our tree situation, that the property owners are not being contacted about issues. And I, you know, I heard that a lot when I was the HOA president. So things that were happening that the homeowners, the property owners knew nothing about.
Sure, we, you could get that, actually, from the assessment list. We've actually done that, we did a survey for the City of Englewood, and we worked with their communications department in using the texting method that we used for the survey data collection, just to educate and inform. And if you're interested in that, there's a way perhaps that you could help, if you are interested in having that list offline outside of this project, we can help you with that, and we'd be happy to. It's inexpensive, it's not that difficult to do if you have an interest. And sending those texts is very affordable. It's really been a great evolution in data collection, because doing phone only, unfortunately, to interview somebody, and, and these surveys were close to 16 minutes long over the phone, and a cellphone interview can cost as much as $65 to $70 per interview. So as you can imagine, that text as an ability to attract and get somebody's attention and bring them in, and, and have them engage in the survey, has really opened up the door, and just a wider array of people are able to participate. So I'm happy to follow up with you after this, in any way, if you want, if you're interested in a way of being able to get ahold of those homeowners.
No, I'm, I just, you know, I think there's, you know, I could talk to John, because, you know, during those discussions with the non-property owners, they had a lot of suggestions. So I'll just pass those along.
Okay.
And when you say registered voters, I want to make sure we clarify in a recorded session, you mean registered voters in the City of Fountain?
Absolutely.
That's all that matters.
Absolutely.
And, and, yeah, and property owners are supposed to have a business license with the City of Fountain, so that code enforcement can get hold of them when there's issues. And I, I guarantee a lot of them don't, and that, that, that would help if they would do that, so, yeah. But anyways, okay, does council have any further questions? I'm not seeing any other lights from any other council members, and I'm seeing a lot of no's. Okay, all right. I'm going to ask you to step aside for just a minute and see if we have any comments or questions from any members of the public, please.
Absolutely.
And IT, let me know if you have anybody online, please. Going, going, gone. Okay, IT, nobody online? Okay, staff, do you have any questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, yeah, I just wanted to, first of all, thank David for all the work on this. This has been a huge, but yeah, really important process to take us through. And David spends a lot of time working on these surveys statewide, and, and walking us through the creating of the, you know, the, the surveys, the whole process, developing and so forth. David and then John Trilch spent a ton of time working on things, refining and so forth, working with our department heads to help refine those questions. So to me, there's just a huge value in seeing what we have now, which is what we didn't know before. We didn't know how our public felt about this, and now we have statistically valid survey that says, hey, our, well, the way I read this is our public actually supports both of those, not necessarily at the same time, but certainly feels strongly about both in a, in a supportive way. And so it'll be interesting to see the council discussion, which I assume we'll have at our next meeting on July 12th, that we'll have that discussion July 13th, if the council decides to move forward with the PPRTA. decides to move forward with the PPRTA. July 13th will be the PPRTA or, uh, meeting that then they can then discuss taking it to their member governments as well, because there's a whole process to do that. So from a timing standpoint, we'll still be ahead of that curve. We'll make sure that we get it put on their agenda regardless, whichever way we go, so that we're at least lined up if that's the direction the council goes. If not, it'll be real easy to jump up and say, hey, thank you, and we can talk about, you know, future efforts, whatever. But it is, to me, just, it was really interesting. The questions were interesting, the comments, you should all have those now through your emails, really great comments. There, there's some pretty interesting comments, too. There's, there's some folks who think we do these surveys like all the time. And it's like literally the first time I think we've done something like this in 15 years, so.
Well, the amount of surveys I've gotten in the last three weeks.
There are a ton of surveys out there.
Everybody's doing surveys, yes.
Absolutely. So I, I really appreciate David again, and, and knowing that we have someone like this when questions come up about how the survey is administered, you know, those sort of technical questions, how to read it, you know, and so forth. So that's all I had to say. I don't know, Chief or Todd, if you guys had any other comments you wanted?
You know, just as a comment to everyone, we, again, we appreciate Dave. This, this information is extremely important, regardless of what the decision, if we move forward with public safety or roads. I spoke to the Chair of our roadway focus group today, and, and basically the roadway focus group, they support the public safety initiative as well. And I think all of us would just ask, regardless of what the decision is on July 12th, let's say PPRTA is, is not the decision to move forward, we would just ask that we all agree on a good plan to move forward on our roads and a funding mechanism through PPRTA for all the reasons that David just showed us. But we just appreciate the information. We're going to be able to take this and, and use it, and as well as some of the comments. But I think it comes down, and David and I talked about, he was, he was shocked when, it was funny, when I was giving him our, our budget amounts, he went, no, no, that, that can't be. And when we talked about the different neighborhoods and roads and those things. So it, it comes down to where we've got the right folks in place as far as our street superintendent, those things, but with that little amount of money, there's only so much you can do. You can only, you only squeeze so much out of that turnip. So we appreciate it, David. Thank you.
And, and just to remind, we did put to renew the moving fountain forwards tax on the ballot three years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and it failed. So it's, this, so this is not, not that we're, you know, and the, the roads are how they are, and we need, we need a long-term funding source. We are trying to be as completely transparent with this. That's why we did the survey, had the results brought back in a public session. We want to get emails from people, and, and emails are probably better than phone calls because most of us are busy. And emails, but if you can't, don't have email, make a phone call. We need to hear from people really in the next two weeks. And really, so please take your time, go through this, go through the slides, and, and give us some, and, uh, feedback from this, because this is, this is not our money. This is everybody else's money, and, and we're, we're asking you to help us to figure out how you want to invest in the community. So, because, you know, like you said, roads aren't pretty, and they're not exciting, but it does affect your home value. And you, and you're drive, if you're driving on dirt in front of your road or, or have a huge pothole, and it, it affects your, the whole value of your home also. And my husband loved that question about how much it would save him. That was his favorite question, the whole survey of how much money it would save him in fire and, you know, whatever, in the insurance. He thought that was the best question of the whole thing, so go for it. All right.
Well, again, just thank you for the opportunity. It's a big responsibility conducting a survey like this because we're representing you, and we want to make sure the city and all the staff come across as educated, thoughtful, and informed so that your residents appreciate the information you're giving them so you can have an honest, you know, and straightforward discussion. So again, thank you so much for the opportunity, and you know where to find me.
I think, I think we have one more question from a staff member.
Dave, I just wanted to clarify for the record that the police department budget is only $600,000. So streets is actually funded more than the police department currently, just for the record. Todd's looking at me like I'm Pinocchio, but I, I just agree, I, uh...
Thanks, Chris. I'm not, yeah, I'm not, yeah.
See, seeing this process work from start to finish, great job by you, great job by our company, great job by the staff, and Scott, and John, and Todd, and everyone that jumped on this really early when we needed to. Thank you for being flexible, sir. You know, win, lose, or draw, however this plays out, those, the survey results, and I knew that from inception, would be very valuable, especially from public safety, right? Frank and I talk about the fire department are the real heroes all the time. Easy to love the men and women in red. And we're really curious to see how the police department turned out and the comments, and we'll, we'll see what we can derive out of that to get better and grow too as an organization. So thank you.
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you so very, very much.
Yep.
All right, thank you. Scott, any wind-up statements or?
I think, I think...
Okay, you were looking at me like you had a, a really good statement to make that was going to, okay. All right. We're going to move on to item 10, correspondence, comics, and ex officio reports. How about that, Scott?
Uh, Madam Mayor, I do not have anything. Thank you, though.
Mr. Evans?
Um, just to let everybody know, we are going into paving season, so that 650,000 will be spent in the next month or two. So expect several projects to go on. One thing that's going to impact Link Road, the detour will be moved from Kane Road over to Erma later on at the end of this week. What that is allowing them to do is they're completing basically the three, four trenches that they had to dig in there for all the utility services. Now they're going to be tearing up the rest of Link Road in that intersection so that that developer rebuilds Link Road. So that will take probably a month, and then Link Road is planned to be opened up a couple of weeks before school starts. So we'll be making that adjustment this week, and we'll be getting it out to everyone tomorrow. We should have those maps tomorrow.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Uh, the only comment that I wanted to make is regarding the executive session on your, on your agenda. I just requested that be for negotiations, not legal advice. So I, I had talked to Joni about that a little bit, too, but that was just the only change that I had for that request. But that's all that I had.
All right, thank you. Chief Heber?
Yep. Madam Mayor, just a couple of things. I think most of you are familiar that Eric Markowski's daughter, 23-year-old daughter, passed away three weeks ago in a motorcycle accident. The public safety department, many members in the city have been very kind to both families. There was her boyfriend and her that both lost their lives that night. So Eric wanted me to pass on his thanks to the city for a lot of support. Eric specifically told me it really helped him solidify his trust in the city. He's a 20-year individual firefighter and been through a lot in his tenure here in the organization, and he wanted me to pass on the thanks to the city and the leadership here for the support. Her celebration of life will be tomorrow, New Life Church at 11 o'clock, and I, I think a lot of the fire department, police officers, myself, will be up there to support him and his family through a very difficult day. Secondly, we're out of fire restrictions for the city, so that's going to make legal fireworks legal in the city of Fountain. Whether it was legal or illegal, it was not going to, it was not going to have very much of an income. Fourth of July is going to be active. And if it's anything like the last two years, and specifically last year, that Frank and I were out there in the octagon with the troops, it's going to resemble a war zone at some level out there across. We really encourage people to be responsible and be safe. We encouraged it last year, and every year I've been here, we'll encourage again this year. We've tried to educate the public. We posted videos online to educate what legal fireworks on through our social medias. We've written articles, and articles written in the paper. But to manage everyone's expectations, I just want you to know that your public safety has extra people on. We will actively be patrolling throughout the community, and we will respond to calls in service of fires, emergencies, injuries, a fight at a party, a gunshot. Your public safety will remain out there to protect the community. And we'll deal with the illegal or grossly illegal fireworks as, as we come upon them and if they need to be shut down. Remember last year, some of the neighborhoods we were in, we were in there pretty thick. There might have been 10 of us, and we were in neighborhoods of 200 or 300 people that didn't want us there. So I just remind you of that experience from last year, so we all kind of know what we're going to look like, because 4th of July, coming on the 4th of July, I'll be here soon. We'll try and keep everyone safe, to include our first responders, and we'll just pray that our, our city is responsible, helps us out, and we all make it through the 4th of July weekend safely and celebrate our nation as we all want to. So any questions to that? I just wanted to have that a little bit tonight before we, before we don't see each other again.
So what do you want people to do if they, neighbor has gone to Wyoming and bought out the store?
We saw that.
Because I know 911 gets absolutely overrun to the point of they can't get to the gunshots or the heart attacks, or, because there's so many people calling in with honest concerns, right? People that are shooting stuff up in the air that could cause a, you know, fire just like that. But on the other hand, if they call once and report it, and it continues, you want them to continue calling to call? Because this is just a real issue. We only have so many call takers in the 911 centers that can handle things.
You know, we dealt with that last year, and we're going to deal with it again this year. I would say call, and if we're not there within 30 minutes, call again. We will eventually get all the calls for service. We'll put them on the board, and the fireworks will, will remain pending as we deal with real calls for service, and then get to those firework calls for service to figure out what's going on and what, what we can do to fix it. So we do want people to call. We will come. From last year and years of experience, we kind of know the hotspots. I know the, we know the open fields. We've learned from being on the ground, on the open fields, and where it's most likely to burn, and where it's going to be unsafe. So we'll be patrolling out, hitting those hotspot areas throughout to help calm it. We'll hit interiors in the neighborhoods as we did in, in all the past years. But please encourage them to call. Just give us some grace that night. It's hang on, bolt on, give us some grace, call, we'll be there to help you as soon as we can get there.
And, and clean up after yourself.
Amen.
Because it was really frustrating last year to go out, I can't remember who I went out with, week after and tour the neighborhoods, and the garbage is still in the streets.
Yes.
You know, clean up after yourselves. So, all right, Councilmember Estes?
Um, would it be better if everybody called the non-emergency number two?
It would, ma'am.
Can we get that put prominently onto the website?
We will.
And on social media, please?
It's, uh, it is, I believe it's up on the website in our educational of fireworks, but we'll update that and make sure it's on for republishing.
Yeah, put it right out front, not where I have to look anywhere to get it. The other one is any fireworks that leave the ground are illegal or explode.
In a general statement, yes.
Okay, just so we kind of have a general consensus of what doesn't work.
Everything that's on, on the ground, sparklers, uh, the fountains that are on the ground and not 20 feet high, everything ground-oriented, safe. It's anything just about they're going to shoot in the air for a big boom or for effect, which is going to happen illegal by state statute. And in accordance with the new ordinance that, that will be active, there is a charging document now to charge people with a fireworks violation for our city. I just want to educate everybody on that. We want voluntary compliance, just as we do in speed enforcement and everything else. That's our first goal, but those, those, we do have a method now to charge in 20 to the city.
And, and I just wanted to get that point about that it is a state statute that nothing in the air.
That's correct.
It's not just Fountain, it's not just El Paso County, it's the entire state that has said no to those.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If you didn't buy it in Colorado, it's probably not legal, right?
Yes, as a general statement.
Councilmember, Councilmember Rick?
Um, for Commander Lewis and for Chief Heber, as you have educated me, we have different levels of incidents that we deal with. When you get a call, something's a level one, a level two, et cetera. Where are we, uh, what level are we putting fireworks violations?
They'll be at a lower level, priority two calls, and lower below that. We'll respond, that's why we retain our, our emergency resources to respond to priority ones.
Yeah, I just want to make sure fireworks is down.
Yep.
Not, we're not taking our resources away from level one, level two calls.
Correct. The firework that lands in a field or somebody's house and starts the house on fire, that's the one we want to get to. Someone blows their handoff, right, happens every 4th of July, that's the one we want to get to.
Yep. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any more fireworks questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Scott, did you have something?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to share real briefly that, and I just was made aware of this, that one of our local legends has passed away, and some of you probably are aware of that. Ms. Arith Bruce, Bruce passed away yesterday, and she is one of our local legends. She's, in fact, as you drive into the city of Fountain, you can see a big sign honoring her barrel racing champ, national championship, I don't remember the year.
65.
65, Worlds, thank you. Thank you, Carl, appreciate it. 65, thank you. I just wanted to pass on, because many of us have known Arith over the years, and I think that'll, that'll matter a lot to a lot of our folks in this community.
Thank you. I had not, I had not seen or heard that, so whoever passed that up, thank you very much. I, I was honored to go last year maybe to her birthday party, and I presented her with a coin for the city. And, yeah, definitely a legend, a lot of input, a lot of, always loved listening to her and everything she had to say. She had a lot of opinions, but I really enjoyed listening to her. Mrs. Carrick, did you, if you need to say something, please come up to the microphone.
I just wanted, um, Arith is being inducted into the PRCA in a couple of weeks. And I was a teenager when I moved here, and I remember seeing her, the two-horse trailer that she won. It was so brightly decorated, and they still have it on the farm, East Fountain. She's quite a gal.
Thank you so much. Appreciate, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Like I said, I was not aware of that. Um, Scott, can we make sure on the next council agenda, we have a moment of silence for her, please? All right. Okay. We are on to Carl.
I have nothing.
Carl looks so shocked. All righty, Mr. Blankenship, welcome back.
Thank you. I have nothing for the council or this evening.
Mr. Trilch?
Nothing additional, ma'am.
Joni?
I just wanted to add, even though we filled a vacancy on the park board tonight, there are still vacancies available on the park board and the planning commission if anybody is interested.
Okay, thank you. IT, anything tonight?
Uh, nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I think that's pretty much it, unless anybody wants to jump up and say anything. All right, I will start with Councilmember Duncan tonight.
All righty. So I was glad to see, I went over to the Fountain Library to drop off some information, and I was glad to see that we had a voting area over there to vote. It closed at seven, so I was really happy to see that. So thanks to the El Paso County for bringing that information, you know, bringing that opportunity here to Fountain. I went to the CML conference, the first day, that Tuesday, was my birthday. I had a lot of fun on that day and lots of fun during that week. We learned a lot of information, and one of the things that I really want to talk about is that our insurance plans, since we're talking about, you know, fire and fireworks and, you know, we don't want anybody's house to catch a fire, but under insu, under insurance is preventable. So disasters are less painful if you plan for them. So please, check with your insurance companies to make sure that you are covered. And I don't know, Chief Heber, about the, I was really shocked about the, the survey. So, you know, what came to mind was that, you know, that TV show that, with the Bad Boys, and we went out with the, with the police, and we, we really covered what they do. So people can, you know, I, I was shocked to see that number about our police department. So I don't know what we can do to bring that up, but I just remembered, you know, that show doesn't come on anymore, but it was very popular. So, you know, to, to highlight our, the police and show what we really do and how we protect our citizens here. And also about our streets department, I don't know if we can do something on the life of our street departments so that they will know how hard they work. They really work hard for us, for what they have going on. So that's all I have, but I, I do want to express that our streets department and our police department are doing the best with the resources that they have.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Estes?
Just a big shout-out and happy birthday, United States, 246 years. So, and in a month, it'll be 146 years for the state of Colorado. So, go US.
Councilmember Hinton?
Yes, my monthly meeting with the housing authority. People may not realize, these people are doing great work for affordable housing. They got a huge grant for one of the, the housings that they have. Kudos to them. Also, I'm perplexed tonight based off the surveys. I'm one of these guys, and maybe it's just the youngness of me. We could do it. I believe in Fountain. I think that this is, it's a definite need that we need to, to, to make these improvements here and now. We don't need to wait. We need to be proactive on this. I believe our citizens would benefit from these ballot initiatives that have been proposed and the surveys that have been put out. These are very important, and I just want our citizens to know that. Those that may be undecided or haven't really swung the pendulum either way, yes or no, we need you. And I'm willing, personally willing to, to beat feet and walk the streets and to educate our, our residents about the importance of this, of this, that we have put on these ballot surveys, and if I have to do it, I'll do it. If I got to take time off, I'll do it, because I really believe in these ballot initiatives that are important going forward. So if you're out there listening and watching, we need you. We need everybody's input on this. This is not something to take lightly. Our roads are important, our public safeties are important, and we're asking a lot from you, and we understand that. But we need to do this, and I appreciate all those that have participated in this and the staff that has worked so hard on it and to, to build it forward. But I think we can really do it. That's just my opinion.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Corey?
We had a neighborhood meeting last Wednesday and big shout-out to Todd Evans and Tish from the Code Enforcement. They did a great job. Those guys are rock stars and they answered a lot of questions for a lot of these residents. They just had questions about anything from the roundabout to just what were the specifics, the things with, like the problems Code Enforcement's dealing with right now, one of the boundary lines for like my district and everything. So it was awesome and they did a great job just answering a lot of questions. I mean, we had a resident actually walk up to me right at the end of that meeting and say, lived here 12 years, never had anybody from the city come down, so that's awesome that you guys did that today. So they really appreciated it, so big shout-out, it was a good meeting, so.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Rick?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Two things. First, thank you to Councilmember Hinton. I totally 100% concur. We need to go out and we need to beat the pavement. We need to convince people and I'm behind you 100%. Finally, for the city manager. I went to CML and I got information and as you know, little information makes you dangerous. When we talk about public safety and PPRTA, either way we go, one of the classes I went to was on public finance and budget. And one of the things that was said, the presenter said, was when you've got money coming in, you need to create a fund for it in your budget so people see how much money is coming in and they can see how much is going out and where it's going out to as a line item in your budget. If we go forward with this public safety and the PPRTA, I would like to see if we can get that set up in advance so that we can use that to tell the public, hey, you're gonna be able to look on the website, on our, on our city's website, you're gonna be able to see how much is coming in, you're gonna be able to see where it's going as a way to sell it, as a way to get people to go into that. So I would ask if you could start having John look at that now to see what we would need to do to do that.
Yeah, in fact, excuse me, that's a best practice and that's what we do currently when we, when we, when the voters pass Moving Fountain Forward. That's specifically what we did so they can track specifically the dollars that come in for Moving Fountain Forward and how they go out. And that's the exact thing that we would do with any sort of ballot measure dollar that would come in. That's an easy thing for us to set up and that will be set up.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
I went to CML also. We had an interesting year up there at CML this year and I had my 38th wedding anniversary by myself, sick in bed. So that was a, that was a thrill. All right, something different every year, right? I haven't done that before for 38 years. I hope I won't do it again. All righty. And, and I also went to the senior summit that was put on and that was really, really exciting. It was open up to any seniors in the area and there was hundreds of them that showed up. And it was a great opportunity to meet a lot of different services that are provided for seniors and that was really great. And I also, there was no photos included, went to the coroner's report and taught a lot, and Scott, I mean, Chris, I'm getting there, a lot of information that I think we need as a community. Overwhelmingly, the fentanyl deaths and, and our coroner's done a fantastic job bringing that to our attention. It is unbelievable how it has lowered the live, life expectancy in the state of Colorado for the first time in like years. And it's basically due to some of these younger people dying of fentanyl deaths, including infants. So it is something we have got to get a handle on. I, I don't have the answer, but really, really is scary when you see it, those numbers, how it's affecting our society. And I don't know if you want to say anything on that or not, but no photos included, I tell you, but.
Well, I do, it is a national epidemic. They take down 200,000 pills weekly up in Denver, in the Denver metro area. They seize 200,000 counterfeit pills that look like a fake aspirin, oxy, everything you will get. And that's the risk that out, enters into your home and a trace touch of two grams of fentanyl will kill any living human being and it takes less than that to kill a baby and there have been baby deaths. Tragically, we sat with Dr. Leon at, one of the things we did, and a father spoke that he had two twin 15-year-old sons that he lost them both in the same instant over, you know, messing around with this. Kids these days, they don't get to experiment and have fun like we did when we were growing up when there wasn't a risk of death with especially fentanyl and then their dangerous stuff. So we're certainly engaged in that fight in our community. We certainly seize fentanyl here in our community. It's here. It comes through here, it's trafficked through here and we seize it. In order to prep our kids, and I know our kids are really important here, we created that video that played throughout the high school in every room as attended by police officers and SROs to ask questions. We did it at the middle school, it was a really good video with Officer Stage that was produced by the school district. And we intend to continue to do that to get that message out and to help educate parents because there's a lot of parents, frankly, that don't understand the risk of fentanyl. So thank you for bringing that up. We're engaged in that fight. We'll be engaged again in it going back in the school year. And you know, we really want to get, stay ahead of that, but it's serious and it's here in El Paso County.
Well, I would encourage anybody that has anything to do with youth and, and I, and maybe above, but to have a police officer and have someone come in and talk about this because if you're running a daycare program this summer, if you're doing an after-school program, take advantage of the resources we have because it, it, it's just one pill and they're dead. Like you said, there are no second chances and, and you know, keep your kids busy. Don't give them time to be bored. But I always had a mom list. If you tell me you're bored, so don't let your kids get bored. And, and it's scary. And you know, if your mom's, if your mom's not handing it to you or your dad's not handing it to you, then you don't need to be taking it basically. And you just have to assume it's in it any day, nothing, because that, that really, lowering the life expectancy in the state is, and it was pretty significant by a certain, and they said it was basically due to, to fentanyl. And, and then people driving into the influence of it also having to do with that too. So I just wanted to make sure that got brought up tonight. And so we have an announcement of an executive session tonight? Oh, I'm, I'm so sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Is Councilmember Applegate still online? Okay, does he have anything to say tonight?
Yes, he is. No, thanks for calling. No, I don't have anything tonight. He said, "I went to CML too and I don't want to talk about it." It didn't come out too well. Councilmember Applegate, please turn up your mic. We cannot hear you. Are they gonna be on the website where we can find all of them? I'm not sure he's unmiked, so he's, or he is mic'd, so he's ready to speak, but we're not hearing any audio from you.
Okay, forget it.
Oh, there we go. We can hear you now.
We're all waiting on you.
We just heard you, Councilmember Applegate.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I was just wondering if all those slides that he showed are gonna be on the website so we can research them?
Yes, John Trilch said they're gonna be on the city website tomorrow by noon.
Okay.
And you got the results in your email, thank you. But for the general public, everybody else, they'll be on by noon tomorrow. All right. Anything else, Councilmember Applegate? All right, thank you very much. Okay. On to item 11, announcement of executive sessions.
In accordance with the city charter and the Colorado Open Meetings Act, the city council open session is to determine whether it will hold a closed executive session. A closed executive session may be held upon an affirmative vote of two-thirds of the quorum present. If consent of the closed executive session is not given, the items will maybe discussed in open session. The purpose of the executive session requested is pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024 for the purpose of review of approval of amended, approval and amendment of executive session minutes and pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024E for the purpose of receiving, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators. I just wanted to point out that as City Attorney Johnson, CRS Section 24-6-4024B was posted, the request is to change that to 4024E in your vote, please.
Attorney Johnson, do you need the motion to reflect that, that we're changing from B to E? Or does it?
Yeah, that would, that would be great.
Okay.
Because well, the meetings, the minutes were posted and so that's fine. So as long as you just mention that Section E is in your motion, that should be just fine.
Okay, so we have a request from the city clerk to vote to go into an executive session and to amend it to show that in the motion that it, that will be in Part Two, Section E, not Section B. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Estes?
I move to go into executive session in making the amendment that we will go into pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024E.
Okay, we have a motion. Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any discussion? If not, please vote.